And this is gavel to gavel, WCVWTV's complete -- and this is gavel to gavel, WCVWTV's complete coverage of Richmond City Council. Good evening once again. I'm Dick Harmon. Welcome to our first meeting of the month of May. And the informal meeting was held basically in stages. They were in conference and they were in, out of the room, they're back in, enclosed session, open session. They just got done with the informal and we're trying to get the regular meeting started on time at 6 o'clock. So we'll go through the agenda very quickly here. We have 13 items on the consent agenda, one on the regular and one budget paper. And let's run through those right now, then we'll give you a recap when we are done. Okay, starting off with ordinance number 2013-199. That's item number one. Special use at 1110 Grove Avenue for a multifamily dwelling with up to seven dwelling units. That one stays on consent. Item two, ordinance 2014-37. This amends a special use at 2621 Grove Avenue. It's also a retreat hospital. This would authorize a modification of certain identification and directional signs and authorizing a parking garage use. That stays on consent. Item three, ordinance 2014-74. Initially rezone 5007 Kent Merril Loop from R2 Single Family Residential to R5C Residential Family. That item stays on consent. Now, item four, ordinance 2014-94. And this is special use at 1619 and 1621 West Broad Street for a radio broadcasting studio and offices on the second floor, including an accessory antenna, parking waiver, and permitting a nightclub use. This one, this is a camel restaurant. And what this paper is basically, without oversimplifying it, is being able to extend the hours of operation during weeknights and possibly on weekends. It was, I believe, 11 o'clock weeknights and on the weekends 1:00. The one possibly goes to 2:00. That one, no matter what though, it's going to be continued. It goes back to planning commission and we'll be back here at our June 9th meeting. Item five, ordinance 2014-96. Authorizing the CIO to accept $2,761 from the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation for the purpose of funding Main Street Station Phase III development. And item six, ordinance 2014-97. Authorizing the CIO to accept $8,3045 from the Federal Transit Administration, also for the purpose of funding the Main Street Station Phase III development. They both stay on consent agenda. Item seven, ordinance 2014-98. This is declaring a public necessity for and authorizing the acquisition of parcels of real property owned by the Richmond Outreach Center. This is at 6255 Old Warwick Road, 6277 Old Warwick Road, 6295 Old Warwick Road, and 6295 A Old Warwick Road. And this is for the purposes of operating a public park, recreational center, and athletic fields. That stays on consent. And item eight is basically a companion paper because this is how they're going to pay for it. So it's accepting the program of proposed capital improvement projects in the fiscal year, this past year and for four years after that. So those two papers, one says, yeah, we're going to do it. One says, how are we going to pay for it? And those stay on consent agenda. Item nine, ordinance 2014-100. Accepting the deeds from the school board conveying 1611 North 31st Street from the school board to the city. And this is the old Armstrong High School. And this will become, be turned over to the city for operation. And that is a school, but the Armstrong School is now where JFK used to be. But this is the old building. It'll be reverting to the city. That stays on consent. Item 10, resolution 2013-R254. Supporting the city administration effort to settle certain claims asserted by certain owners of real property abutting Princeton Creek in the city of Richmond. That one is being continued to our June 9th meeting. Item 11, resolution 2014-R69. This imposes enhanced speeding penalties and unauthorized placement of signs giving notice thereof on portions of Seventh Avenue between West 22nd Street and Dundee Avenue. And item 12, pretty much the same thing. And this is on West Carey located between South Addison Street and South Meadow Street and South Granby Street and South Cherry Street. Item 13, resolution 2014-R71. This approves $1,765 from the council district funds for the second district to pay for the printing and mailing of the second district spring 2014 newsletter to second district presidents. Those papers all stay on consent agenda. There are no appointments or reappointments scheduled for this evening. One item on the regular agenda. And this is ordinance 2014-85. This authorizes the CIO to submit a consolidated plan and annual action plan to USDA or to HUD as an application for the receipt of funds for community development block grant, home investment partnership funds, emergency solutions grant funds, and housing opportunities for persons with AIDS funds to accept funds from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount of $7,844,601 and to appropriate that money to those various projects. That stays on the regular agenda. It's the only item on the agenda tonight. There was a public hearing on this at the last meeting. And the budget-related paper, this one is ordinance 2014-61. And this one is accepting a program of proposed capital improvement projects for the fiscal year beginning July 1st and for the four years thereafter to adopt the capital budget for the fiscal year. And this is being continued till a special meeting on Wednesday, the 14th of May. So this coming Wednesday, they will have a special budget meeting. Okay, now that brings us to formal awards tonight. We've got three of them. One to the Virginia Cooperative Extension receiving, it'll be Trondra Lomax Brown. This is officially recognizing Virginia Cooperative Extension on the occasion of the 100th anniversary of the Smith Lever Agricultural Extension Act of 1914. The second award will be proclaiming Richmond Emergency Medical Services Week, actually the third work week of May 2014. And the third is declaring May 17th through 23rd as Richmond Safe Boating Week. Those are the items on the awards and presentations for tonight. We have eight speakers signed up for citizens' comment period. And they'll be speaking about leaves from city trees falling on a person's property, Maggie L. Walker's birthday, professional development, GRTC bus stops, the Affordable Care Act, funding for the Maggie L. Walker Initiative, the archaeological study of Shakal Baham, and words of appreciation for city council members. Those are the eight people signed up for citizens' comment tonight. So what do we have? Okay, we have originally 13 items on consent. Two are being continued. They bring us down to 11 items. No appointments or reappointments. Regular agenda, just one paper. That's a CDBG block grants paper. That stays on regular agenda. The budget-related paper, that's being continued to the Wednesday special meeting. So they'll actually be working on only 12 papers tonight. 11 on consent agenda, one on regular agenda. And the eight citizens' comment speakers. Before we start tonight's city council meeting, I'm going to take a personal privilege here. And I know I speak for an awful lot of people in the greater Richmond area. Considering the tragedy this past weekend of the hot air balloon explosion that cost the life of three people in the Richmond area, I did not know the pilot of the balloon, Daniel T. Kirk. He's from Delaware, had a very good record, safety record, for I believe 12 years or more. He had two persons who also perished in that accident. Ginny Doyle, the associate head coach, University of Richmond Women's Basketball, and Natalie Lewis, the director of basketball operations for women's basketball at the University of Richmond. I did know these two ladies. I had known Ginny for quite some time, having been the PA announcer for University of Richmond Women's Basketball. She was a competitor, but she was so team oriented and so people oriented. She always stressed that there's more to life than just basketball. It was an important way for some people to gain education, but she also made sure they realized education was the primary reason they were in college. Natalie Lewis, director of basketball operations, fairly new to the program, only two years. She was a swimming champion at Richmond. Ironically, I did not know this because I did not talk to her as often as I talked to Ginny, but she was from my hometown of Buffalo, New York. She came to Richmond to swim. She was a swimming champion in Buffalo as well. The two of them died all too young, way too young. And I know that grief is being felt, not just by the University of Richmond, but by the families of these two fine people, by the family of Captain Kirk, as he liked to be called. And our heartfelt prayers and condolences go out to the families of these people. We thank Ginny and Natalie for their contributions they made to the city of Richmond Basketball and City of Richmond. They will all be missed. We'll be getting started in just a couple of minutes. Stay tuned.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here for the formal meeting of Richmond City Council. We'll start in just one minute, but I'd ask all council members to take their seats, if they would please, here in the dais. All right, we've got a majority of council in their chairs. At this time, the meeting will come to order. I always ask that we start with an invocation from a local minister. At this time, I'm pleased to announce it is from my neighbor around the corner, Boulevard United Methodist Church at 321 North Boulevard. Reverend Rachel Jean May will be giving the invocation. I see you stand and immediately after, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me? God who is in us, with us, for us. Oh, that your people in this place would gather in such a way this night that you would want to show up. But because we know that our efforts to live life together are not always hospitable to our ideals, I am the one to ask. Come, be our guest. Nudge us to behave like those whose company would be sought by goodness itself. To these councilmen and women, to their liaisons, to residents of Richmond, give us grace, the grace that would help us practice the things, the ways we long to be our legacy. Where there is aggression, give us ease. Where there is misrepresentation, give us a spirit that seeks to understand before insisting that we feel understood. Or to say that this is, business is not to say that human lives are not at stake. And to be agents of what is vibrant, what is great, more than power, we need each other. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Madam Clerk, would you please read the council chambers' emergency evacuation plan and the citizen speaker guidelines?
Upon activation of the emergency alarm signal, all persons should immediately exit the building. Please use the exits to the left or right front of the council chamber or the east or west stairwells outside the rear doors of the chamber. Do not use elevators or escalators. After exiting the building, proceed to the assembly area located in the parking lot bordered by Clay, 8th, and 9th Streets. Citizens and employees should assist visually and hearing impaired visitors with exiting the building. Citizen Speaker's guidelines: Citizens wishing to speak during public hearings and/or citizen comment periods have generally three minutes to speak. Persons appearing before council are not allowed to. Campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use language of a personal nature which insults or demeans any person, including comments directed at public officials or staff members that are not related to their official duties, or address or question staff members directly. All questions are to be directed to the president of council. Failure to adhere to the guidelines may result in speakers forfeiting any remaining time and further disciplinary action as necessary, which could include barring from attendance at future meetings of the city council for a period of six months.
Mr. President, for the record, all members of council on attendance this evening.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I'd like to move now to action on any appointments or reappointments.
There are no appointments or reappointments for consideration this evening.
Thank you very much. May we please move on to awards and presentations?
Certainly. The first recognition being presented by Council Vice President Ellen Robinson recognizes the Virginia Cooperative Extension on the 100th anniversary of the Smith Lever Agricultural Extension Act of 1914. Signed into law by President Woodrow Wilson on May 8th, 1914, the Smith Lever Agricultural Extension Act of 1914 established permanent government funding directed at spending the public adoption and implementation of best practices in agriculture. Becoming a federal program known as a cooperative extension, the word cooperative reflects its organizational structure as being delivered as a partnership between the United States Department of Agriculture, universities, and state and county governments. Delivered at the local government level, the term extension bespeaks its role in extending university research to people in surrounding communities. In the Commonwealth, Virginia Cooperative Extension is the name of the coordinated effort delivered by Virginia Tech and Virginia State University through a network of 107 local and city offices, 11 agricultural research and extension centers, and six 4H educational centers. Richmond City Council and Mayor Dwight C. Jones hereby recognize Virginia Cooperative Extension on the occasion of the 100th anniversary of the Smith Lever Agricultural Extension Act of 1914.
Madam Clerk, Mr. President, members of Richmond City Council and members of the city, citizens of the city of Richmond, it is an honor and a privilege to recognize 100 years of services through, in support of the Virginia Cooperative Extension and the work that is being done in the state of Virginia under this act that was enacted over 100 years ago. We want to congratulate you for being a part of this initiative and making the services that are available in the city of Richmond through the Virginia Cooperative Extension such powerful services that reach our children, families, our senior citizens, and just the extreme outreach effort that you have personally taken to make sure that the services are provided throughout all of the districts in the city of Richmond. Your continual efforts to do outreach, to provide opportunities, even to the extent of having someone out on Marshall Street last week, sharing information, recruiting people to be involved in these services, and providing the vast array of services that are necessary for the citizens of the city of Richmond. And so we celebrate this opportunity of 100 years with you and thank you very much for your personal leadership and what you've done to make a difference in the city of Richmond.
Thank you. I will say ditto to all of that, but I do want to say that since 1914, our community has changed a lot. And we, even though we've shifted from that agrarian society, more agriculture, in this day and time, we're having a challenge around food access and food deserts. And so while I would like to say, you know, in 100 years, you could take a break, we need you even more now than we did even in the past to begin to look at opportunities. And there are any number of opportunities from urban farms to, that are major enterprises that help us really address the issue of increasing food access, addressing hunger generally throughout our community. So I, I'm glad you're here. I know 100 seems like it's pretty old, but we need you to, you know, just continue working with us and really look forward to the work that, not just, and as Vice President has indicated, the work you've done throughout the city of Richmond, but equally as important, the work that you will do throughout the city of Richmond to help us get our arms around food access and food deserts. And it's a big task, but Virginia Cooperative Extension is up to it, working with all of the other collaborative partners. And I just want to say thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And I'd like to thank city council as well as, more specifically, councilperson Newbill and councilperson Robertson, and also Mr. Steve Skinner for their efforts in Virginia Cooperative Extension being recognized, not only in the state of Virginia, but also in the city of Richmond. Last year, we served over 18,000 of your constituents across district lines. And we've been here since 1969. Some people know about us, some people don't now. I hope now, after 100 years, recognition that they do know about us. And we'd like you all to sell and to share in the celebration. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The next recognition being presented by Councilor Cynthia Newbill proclaims the third full week of May 2014 as Richmond Emergency Medical Services Week. Access to quality emergency medical services saves lives by significantly increasing survival and recovery rates of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Richmond is proud of its emergency medical services professionals who provide lifesaving care 24 hours a day, seven days a week. In 1974, the Honorable Gerald R. Ford, President of the United States, proclaimed a week to be Emergency Medical Services Week in response to the Emergency Medical Services Act of 1973. And in recent years, it has been celebrated annually during the third full week of May. In recognition and support of Emergency Medical Services Week, Richmond City Council and Mayor Dwight C. Jones hereby proclaim the third full week of May 2014 as Richmond Emergency Medical Services Week in honor of all Richmond Emergency Medical Services professionals, and thanks them for helping to make our city an even better and safer and happier place.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just can't thank each and every one of you enough for all that you do to ensure that our community is safe through all of your efforts. You work tirelessly throughout the year. You get there on time, for which we're very thankful. You running in and out and protecting us in any number of ways. And we just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you, to recognize the hard work and your commitment to our city and our citizens, and to encourage you to continue the great work. And so with that, Mr. Decker, I will, my honor to present the certificate and to have comment.
Thank you, Dr. Newbill. Mr. President, members of city council, my name is Chip Decker. I'm the chief executive officer of Richmond Ambulance Authority. I am fortunate enough to be joined by some of the men and women that do the real jobs out in the street, as well as our friends from the fire department. I didn't realize they were going to be here, but since they are, I'm glad that they are joining in. The Richmond Ambulance Authority ran 56,000 calls in the last 12 months. 56,000 calls. That makes us per capita one of the busiest, if not the busiest EMS system in the country. We have a response time goal. We use a fractile response time of 8 minutes, 59 seconds, 90% of the time to the most critical life-threatening injuries and medical conditions. And I'm proud to report that our compliance was actually 94%. If you're working with averages, that puts our average response time down under six minutes. So very, very good for the city of Richmond and the people that live here and work here and come here to play. So I'd like to mention just a couple of people that are standing up here. To my immediate right is our newest lieutenant, Assistant Field Operations Supervisor, Ms. Ashley Shariishi. And she was just, I guess, promoted today on the steps of the Capitol. So I don't know if she understands exactly what is to come forward and that she, what she has to look forward to, but I know she will take good care of all of our citizens. Also up here on the far end is our operational medical director, Dr. Joe Ornato, who's, without whose medical license and the trust in us to make sure that he keeps it, allows us to practice in the field like we do. So, and thanks to all of our partners at the fire department for also taking good care of us. So thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, before we go on, I'd just like to add to Mr. Decker. Mr. Decker and I are actually celebrating 20 years of knowing each other this year. Mutual friend got to know us both, and I've enjoyed knowing for the past 20 years. But I also wanted to point out that over the 20 years, I've enjoyed watching you excel in your chosen profession. None of them, none of the jobs you've had have been a job, but it truly has been a calling in a profession. I want to tell you how much your leadership is appreciated. And I know the RH -- And I know the RRA—oh, goodness—the RAA has received numerous accolades nationally and internationally, and I want to let you know they're well-deserved and appreciated.
Thank you, President Samuels. Yeah, that is true. We do receive visitors from all over the state, all over the country, and in the past year, from six foreign countries that come to see how we do what we do efficiently with great patient outcomes. And—it's not all me. I have really good people that—I look good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Decker.
The next recognition being presented by President Samuels proclaims May 17 through the 23rd, 2014, as Richmond Safe Boating Week. Boating for recreation, sport, and relaxation is a favorite pastime of many of our city residents. Each year, the number of water activities and enthusiasts grows, as does the amount and types of motorized and self-propelled watercrafts that are available and used on the water. In support of National Safe Boating Week, and in order to promote safe boating practices, education, and increased awareness, Richmond City Council and Mayor Dwight C. Jones hereby proclaim May 17 through 23rd, 2014 to be Richmond Safe Boating Week, and call this observance to the attention of all Richmond residents.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You know, you can't call yourself River City if you don't have a respect for the water that runs through your city. And as we work to implement a riverfront plan—we're adding an additional $3 million on later on this week to that plan. As you make the water more accessible, it's vitally important that we continue to recognize the importance of being safe on the water. And these gentlemen do that every single day, keep us safe on the water. In addition, we want to make their jobs easier by learning when it's appropriate to wear life preservers, when it's appropriate to be in the water, when it's appropriate to drink, and when it's not appropriate to drink—for example, when you're operating a boat. Gentlemen, for all that you do—for all that you do to keep us safe in the water and to educate us on keeping our safe self in the water, thank you very much.
To City Council and to the citizens of the city of Richmond, and to the Richmond Fire and Richmond Ambulance Authority, on behalf of the United States Coast Guard and the United Coast Guard Exhori, I'd like to say thank you.
Mr. President, that concludes the awards and presentations that we have for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point, I'd like to address any agenda amendments and review the agenda briefly.
Amendments to tonight's agenda are as follows. Item number four, ordinance number 2014-94, will be continued to the June 9 Council meeting. Item number 10, resolution number 2013-R254, will also be continued to the June 9 Council meeting. And the budget-related paper, item 15, ordinance number 2014-61, will be continued to the Wednesday, May 14 Special City Council Meeting, to start at 5:00 p.m. Mr. President, those are all of tonight's agenda amendments.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any additional amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
I will need a motion to accept the amended agenda as presented. Councilmember Bilalz, will you make that motion?
It's moved.
Council is voting on tonight's agenda amendments as presented. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agostino?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
The amended agenda is before you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move now to public comment unless there's an objection by any council member. Seeing none, public comment. Those that signed up to speak, please.
Okay, the first speaker is Marie Morton Hart. Marie Morton Hart.
Wasn't it the comment on the consent agenda that just went? Good afternoon. I am Marie Morton Hart, and I reside in the 8th District, Reva Trammell District. And I have a dollar here from the city of Richmond for some trees. This is my fourth time to be down here for to get these trees out front of my house. And they telling me that I must replace tree for tree. One tree equals 21, tree two, 23, total 44 inches. Twenty-nine trees at $256 each. Now, why do I have to replace trees that's in front of my house that belongs to the city? Can somebody tell me, Mr. Samuel, when I was here before, you told me to see somebody back there, and I told you that I don't care what you say, they do not help you. Now, why did I get this for these trees?
I couldn't tell you. I don't have—I can't read what it says.
Okay, all right. And I want to say that South Side, that's where I'm from, born there 77 years ago, and it's dirty. Hall Street is a disgrace. And that man back there in that office, he got a church round there. Why don't he clean it up? And the trees growing out of the sewer—
There's no clapping.
Trees are growing out of the sewer over there, and throughout the street, the city as I go through there. The good old boys paid people to sign petitions to get—and to vote to get Marty Jewer and Bruce Tyler's out of office. I'm not talking against you, Mr. Bilalz. I like you, Parker. You need to help the people that put you in office. And that's what I got to say. But I want those trees out of front of my house. And don't tell me to tell somebody to help me because I've been here before.
Mr. President.
Ms. Trammell?
Yeah, Marie, I want to see that letter because I'm meeting with Mr. Marshall tomorrow. So, I'd like to have that, please.
Madam Clerk, would someone please pass that letter off to Ms. Trammell?
Thank you.
And Ms. Trammell, what I'd ask if possible is either—if your liaison or—if there's another liaison here—if yours is gone, they could make a copy so that she has a copy for her records. We don't want to leave her in the lurch, because we don't want to leave Ms. Hart in the lurch. We can get a copy for you to be able to take to Mr.—
I'll see Marie tomorrow. I know where she lives.
You know how to find her?
I'll take it to her, yeah.
Okay.
But I want to make sure that y'all get South Side cleaned up. Hall Street is a disgrace. The church, and he got all them people in there, that whatever he said, they followed them. I left because I can't put my money somewhere where they not taking care of the church or the place. And thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Melvin Jones. Melvin Jones.
My name is Melvin Jones, citizen of the city of Richmond. I reside in the 3rd District. I come before City Council this afternoon because July the 15th, we're celebrating Ms. Maggie Walker's birthday, 150th birthday. And I'm asking City Council to see if they can do a little bit more for this lady. This is 150th birthday. I've got calls from Tim Kaine, Eric Cantor, in support. A lot of the churches, rural areas. Delegate McLennan has been in support of it. And City Council had voted on a paper to put a statue of Maggie Walker at Adams-Broadenbrook Road. A question came up at a meeting from a city official saying that—that official said that they couldn't get the specs on that area of Adams-Broadenbrook Road. The traffic pattern, the structure, can't get any right answers. So, I'm asking City Council, I would like for a DPW and traffic anzoning to give me something in writing within 10 days about the traffic pattern, the structure, and, you know, just whatever else. Because something is strange in the city. This lady just talked about some trees, but right there at the health—and the health department, right there where the police station at, they took up a—took up two big trees. Somebody else in this built—right here in this room here would tell you that, and nobody said anything about it. Nobody said anything about it. They did it and put a nice crosswalk there for a wheelchair to be able to go there, but, you know, they took down a real big tree there, right there at—I think it's at 10th and Lee, right behind the police station. So, you know, I'd like to get some answers. And I'd like for the City Council to really do something about having a nice thing for Ms. Maggie Walker. This lady did a lot for this city, a lot, and she did a lot for the rural areas, too. So, I would like y'all's support, please. And I've asked the mayor to have some support, too, but, you know, people don't get phone calls back. But I appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. Mr. Hilber—you can sit down. Thank you. Mr. Hilbert, I know that you're introducing legislation later tonight regarding Maggie Walker. Is that correct?
Yes, I am, Mr. President, to designate her birthday as Maggie Walker Day in the city of Richmond. We're recognizing a lot of 150th anniversaries coming up, and this lady contributed a great deal to our city's history. The first woman to lead a bank, and certainly someone to which we should all aspire. And she inspired us by telling us to dream big, and I know I'm paraphrasing what she said, so forgive me for that, but it is that—the people will be inspired by big dreams. Let's not dream small. So, we want to honor her legacy, and I'm hoping that I'll have eight co-patrons on that to make all nine of us co-patrons of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Darrell Badley.
My name is Darrell the Dice Guy Badley. I reside at 115 East 33rd Street here in the great city of Richmond. I come to you today with professional development training free to each and every one of you. I hold in my hand a box. This box represents our fair city. As you can see, inside of this box, there are dice. Now, no, these are not play toys. These are not games. These are my professional development training mechanisms. If you notice, the dice are different colors, representing the colors that are each and every one of us here in the city of Richmond. Also, if you'll see—you'll notice, each one of the dice has dots. Each dot represents the gifts, talents, and abilities, and even dreams that are we, the city of Richmond. But there's a problem. There's talent, there's ability, there's skill within this box. The problem is, it is contained within this box. It is contained within this containment center, and the center is held by a force and by a power. The problem we have, ladies and gentlemen, is that we don't know what that power is, or do we? We need to find out what that power is so that we could actually release the dreams, power, and abilities, and talents of the fair people of the city of Richmond, I myself included. You know, for many years, this fair council has made many tough decisions, some great and not so much sometimes. And many of you who know me know that I've stood by you through thick and thin. I call myself a son of this city, although I'm not from here. But again, we have the problem of we got to figure out how to get the top off. What is the power that's holding the top on? What is the force that's holding back the talent, the ability, yea, even the dreams of our city, of our children, of our youth? I ask each and every one of you. It is your task, your mandate, to help us figure out who the—who's holding the top on? Who is the gatekeeper for the power and the ability that is the city of Richmond? Of course, when you look at it, and you finally get the top off, you'll see who the force is. And I charge you, as even myself, to be the change this city needs. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Roderick Bullock.
Good evening, President Samuels, Vice President Robertson, members of City Council. Kind of—it's kind of getting redundant and repetitive coming up here speaking to you all, but I just don't like the direction that our city is in. I've been here all my life. I'm a resident of the city of Richmond all my life. Born and raised, 28th Street, Churchill, born and bred. But I look around and I see what's going on to my people in the community. They need help. I mean, from the 6th District to the 7th, to the 8th, some in the 9th. We in despair, the 5th, the 3rd—we in despair, and you all sit back and make decisions. You say things that—the—you attack the mayor, you go in and say that you need security, but you cut the mayor's security detail from the same person that said they need security here. I don't see no more threat to you all than it is to the mayor. And the whole thing, the whole—everything that was going on the last time, that was totally uncalled for. That should have never happened to the individual. That should have never happened. I was here, I saw it, and it was foolishness, pure and unadulterated foolishness. And he and I don't get along, and we may not have the best, but he did not be—deserve to be treated the way he was treated. And that is—that is very disturbing to me because he's a human being, he had a right to be up there at that time. Then we come back and say, oh, security, but you go and mess with the mayor's security detail. Everything that's going on in this city—
Sir, you signed up to talk about the GRTC bus stops. Do you want to address that at all?
That's the same as—why you stop me now? I mean, I done been in the two minutes of my speech, and then you could decide now?
Well, you went very far off.
But I didn't say anything about GRTC. I never—I never said—when I signed up, I never talked about GRTC. I said city issues like I always do. That's frustrating that you can cut me off and you let me speak this long. I'm very disappointed in you, Mr. Samuels. Very disappointed. Because ultimately, as a right as a citizen, you should have said that in the beginning. I never knew that anything had to do with GRTC. But if you want to talk about GRTC, the problem was, I saw a woman that was in a—with a cane—I mean, with a walker that could have been my grandma with oxygen. She had to walk from 6th and Broad all the way to the—to the end of Lee Street, 9th and Lee. That was unacceptable. It's something that y'all have to do about that, too, because you got people in walkers with oxygen tanks. It's hot now. Today, the bus was 100 degrees out on the bus today with no AC. And you know what the GRTC supervisor tells me? Oh, yeah, we just don't have no buses and services, and there's nothing we can do. And I mean, that's ultimately—that's a lot of issues that you have, and you want to talk about GRTC. There's a lot of things about GRTC I could talk about. And that's—that's ridiculous that that woman, it drove past City Hall and took her all the way to 6th and Broad, and she had to go to 6th and Broad, and then the bus didn't stop at 6th and Broad for the 6th, the Willow Lane 6th. She had to walk all the way back to Lee—
You're 30 seconds over. Would you like to summarize?
Yes, Mr. Samuels. I'm done. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Ms. Trammell.
Yes. Let me just say this to the last speaker. We're not trying to get security for us nine council members. We're trying to get security for in here and here. We're trying to get security for in here and here, for the children that come down here, for the staff, for the citizens. I didn't say nothing about me. And $150,000 was going to the teachers, the teachers. They have to go into their pocketbooks and go into their own funds to pay for things for the children in the classroom. That money was going to go to those 700 teachers so they could be repaid. So it's not security for us 24 hours. That's why you see me at the crime scenes at 12 o'clock at night or 1 o'clock in the morning without police officers, and my colleagues, too. So thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Andrew Hildreth.
Good evening, Mr. President, council. I'm Roger Hildreth. I live at 507 St. Christopher's Road. Today, I'm presenting you with 67 signatures, signed by the citizens of Richmond. In addition, which is not here, are 20,304 additional signatures that have already been collected across the state urging Medicaid expansion. This includes the signatures of 431 small business leaders, a group that is frequently and erroneously cited as being against Medicaid expansion. We are here to ask you to endorse the resolution before you. For me, there are only two reasons to support Medicaid expansion, and they are financial and humanitarian. According to a report issued by Chumara Economics and Analytics, a well-respected research firm with offices here in Richmond, benefits to Virginia from Medicaid expansion would increase an estimated $1.7 billion and 15,000 new jobs in 2014 to $5.9 billion and 43,000 jobs in 2019. This is the good news about Medicaid expansion, a healthier economy and healthier people. Here's the bad news about refusing Medicaid expansion. Immediately say goodbye to the funds just mentioned. No new jobs either. To add insult to injury, Virginia will continue to send money to Washington and will get no healthcare money back. The Richmond Times-Dispatch said that Virginians will send $20 million a year to Washington and get nothing in return. If the job of representative government is to watch out for the people's best interest, then decisions about Medicaid expansion seem clear. Accepting Medicaid expansion means more police, firefighters, teachers, and better healthcare. And if this is not the job of the city and the state government, I don't know what is. There is another aspect of Medicaid expansion. It is the human one. Expanding Medicaid will mean that 190,000 Virginians who cannot afford health insurance today will get coverage. That includes single moms with young children who have not gone to the doctor for years because they simply could not afford it. A recent Harvard study said, "We estimate the number of deaths attributable to the lack of Medicaid expansion in opt-out states at between 7,000 and 17,000." We believe that it is immoral for people who enjoy the best healthcare the world has to offer to deny basic healthcare to others. Call it doing the right thing, call it being a good Christian, call it watching out for our neighbors, or just call it being a good person. It really doesn't matter. We are not the kind of people who are willing to not, to deny healthcare to others, and we hope that you are not that kind of people either. And in that spirit, we ask you to endorse the resolution in front of you tonight, and I thank you. And the petition that I mentioned is sitting here.
Madam Clerk, if someone could collect that for me, I'd appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Albert Walker. Albert Walker.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Dr. Kimberly Allen. Dr. Kimberly Allen.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council President Samuels, Vice President Robertson, and members of city council. Our names are Ellen Chapman, Kim Allen, and Terry Brock. We are the steering committee of a new community organization, RVA Archaeology, which advocates for archaeological resources in Richmond. Archaeologists living and working in the Richmond region have reviewed the archaeological plan associated with the Revitalize RVA Development Project. We have shared this review with members of council and the mayor's office and are now submitting this for public record. We have also uploaded it to our RVA Archaeology website for public information. Our review includes a number of concerns, such as the nature of the public's engagement within the mayor's archaeological initiative. Questions include, how will experts be selected for the expert panel? What archaeological protocols will be implemented? What if there are significant archaeological discoveries that impact the construction schedule? Several of our respondents are concerned that the initiative may be intended to replace the Section 106, which it does not. Some members of the public may already have this impression, which must be clarified. Respondents praised administrative administration efforts to engage the public. However, public engagement set forth in the initiative does not provide a defined role for the public in developing research questions or contributing to project design. For example, will the public have an opportunity to weigh in on how the archaeological project will be conducted and which sites would be considered for archaeological excavation? Respondents were also concerned by the lack of a stated role for particular descendant communities. These include Native American, African American, and veterans communities, such as descendants from those who fought in the Civil War. Again, public engagement is an important concern, and we ask that more thought be given to the logistics of this engagement, such as involvement in the school system and providing sufficient notice to a variety of media, convenient times, and locations that facilitate engagement. Finally, this response asks for clarification on key elements of the initiative. For example, if a large number of human burials or other human skeletal remains were recovered, what will the protocols be to manage those discoveries? Why are surveying techniques such as coring, shovel test pits, or geophysical methods not being considered as strategies to proactively identify intact deposits after modern fill has been removed? And finally, we ask that details be provided for all aspects of the project requiring federal permitting and utilizing federal funds. We appreciate the opportunity to respond to the mayor's archaeological initiative and consider it an important display of seeking public engagement. We believe that archaeology is a tool for studying, identifying, and preserving Richmond's cultural and historical resources, whether or not there are public debates about development initiatives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Anthony L. Wells. Anthony Wells.
Mr. Wells?
Council President, Madam Vice President, members of council. I'd like to start off first by saying thank you. Thank you for all the work y'all have done on the budget. Thank you to the citizens that have spoke up for us and sent emails. The subject that I want to talk about tonight is Richmond Fire Department, and it's an outstanding organization. The outstanding organization is Richmond Fire Department, specifically the rank-and-file workers that make it an outstanding organization. We'll start off by talking about, one of the number-one priorities we have is understanding the needs of our citizens. That sounds cliche, but it's true. Let me give you an example. Some of our folks, they don't have much, good, bad, or indifferent, they don't have a lot. We're going to do whatever we can to make sure we salvage what they have and to protect what they have, because that might be all the possessions they have in the world. And we're going to do what we can. If you ever noticed TV news coverage about house fires in the city of Richmond, you might see a house with a burned-out room. Whereas if you look at TV news coverage of jurisdictions outside of Richmond, you'll see a smoldering foundation. Now, just like every rule, there's an exception. But I bet if you ask these firefighters standing behind me about how we do things in Richmond, they would agree with that assertion that we save structures here in Richmond. Second point I wanted to go to is the FITS report. Several years ago, there was a survey done at the fire department, FITS and Associates. The number-one thing that the firefighters spoke up on was the wasteful quid concept, the total quid concept. Now, I don't want to get too technical, but basically, every fire station had a ladder company. It was redundant, it was wasteful, it cost a lot in initial purchase cost, it was a lot of maintenance, a lot of high-maintenance cost, and it also, a lot of fuel cost. The number-one thing that we spoke out against, the firefighters at that time, was how wasteful that was. Now, that right there speaks to the character of the firefighters that we have in the rank-and-file. Their number-one concern wasn't pay us more, or our supervisors are no good. It was, hey, we can do better with less. We can do, we don't have to be so wasteful with the taxpayers' money with all these quids. Third thing I want to talk about, and I'm going pretty fast here, I don't want to, don't want to run out of time, is any time that I get an audience, I'm going to talk about the city of Richmond's smoke alarm program. That is one of the most important things that we do. And I would just like to say, the folks out there that might be watching me, or any of the citizens out here, if you don't know, the city of Richmond will provide you, the fire department will provide you with a smoke alarm. Not only will we provide it, we'll install it for you. And we don't care what anybody's situation is, we don't care if you're rich or poor, if your house is clean or a mess. We're not here to judge. We'll install the smoke alarm. If I can convince one person to let us put in a smoke alarm, and they have a fire, and they get out safely, then every penny you have ever paid me will be money well spent. That's the way I see it. Anyway, I've got 2 minutes and 40 seconds. I just wanted to say to Council President Samuels, when you talked about purple being the color of perseverance and royalty to the fibromyalgia folks, that spoke to me. So I wanted to make sure I wore a Purple Union shirt. Thank you again for everything that you do.
Appreciate it, sir. Good night. No, it's appropriate. Can't have clapping during the meeting. Thank you all for coming out tonight, and thank you for your words. Ms. Trammell, your announcement's got one minute shorter just now.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Mr. President?
Your announcement's got one minute shorter just now.
Oh.
All right. We did have one person that did not show up is Mr. Albert Walker.
That is correct. Mr. Albert Walker present.
Okay. All right. Moving on. Madam Clerk, one item on the regular agenda?
That is correct. That would be item number 14, which is ordinance number 2014-85, to authorize the CAO to submit a consolidated plan, an annual action plan, to the U.S. Department of Housing and Development as an application for the receipt of community block grant funds, home investment partnership funds, emergency solutions grants, funds, and housing opportunities for persons with AIDS funds to accept from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in a total amount of $7,844,601 for various projects. That paper is before you. The public hearing concerning that paper...
Madam Clerk?
Was April the 28th.
That's correct. Folks, this is a paper that allocates federal money throughout the city of Richmond, and federal law requires that we have a public hearing on it and a date different than that which we vote on this paper. So we ensured to comply with that by having the public comments section of this paper two weeks ago. And so what I'm going to do now is bring it to council for any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Council is voting on item number 14, ordinance number 2014-85. Mr. Bellows?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agilasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Abstain.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That paper has been adopted.
Are there any motions to amend and continue?
No, there are no motions to amend and continue this evening.
All right. May we please move, then, to the consent agenda?
Mr. President, the consent agenda items for tonight are as follows. Item 1, ordinance number 2013-199, to authorize the special use of 1110 Grove Avenue for the purpose of permitting a multifamily dwelling with up to seven dwelling units. Item 2, ordinance number 2014-37, to amend ordinance number 2007-313-280, which authorizes special use of 2621 Grove Avenue for the purpose of authorizing the modification of certain identification and directional signs and authorizing a parking garage use. Item 3, ordinance number 2014-74, to conditionally rezone 5107 Kenmare Loop from the R2 Single-Family Residential District to the R5C Single-Family Residential District. Item 5, ordinance number 2014-96, to authorize the CAO to accept $2 million from the Virginia Department of Rail and Transportation and to appropriate the increase to the Department of Public Works Main Street Station Multimodal Transportation Center project for the purpose of funding the Main Street Station Phase III development. Item 6, ordinance number 2014-97, to authorize the CAO to accept $8,304,500 from the Federal Transit Administration and to appropriate the increase to the Department of Public Works Main Street Station Multimodal Transportation Center project for the purpose of funding the Main Street Station Phase III development. Item 7, ordinance number 2014-98, to declare a public necessity for and to authorize the acquisition of the parcels known as 6255, 6277, 6295, and 6295A Old Warwick Road for the purpose of operating a public park recreational center and athletic fields. Item 7, ordinance number 2014-99, to amend the fiscal year 2014 capital budget by increasing the amount appropriated to the South Side Community Center project by $1.5 million and decreasing the amounts appropriated in fiscal years 2015 and 2016 for the purpose of accelerating funding for the acquisition of 6255, 6277, 6295, and 6295A Old Warwick Road for constructing improvements and operating a public park recreational center and athletic fields. Item 9, ordinance number 2014-100, to accept a deed from the school board conveying 1611 North 31st Street to the city and to authorize the CAO to execute such deed. Item 11, resolution number 2014-R69, to impose enhanced speeding penalties and to authorize the placement of signs giving notice thereof on the portion of Sims Avenue between West 22nd Street and Dundee Avenue. Item 12, resolution number 2014-R70, to impose enhanced speeding penalties and to authorize the placement of signs giving notice thereof on the portions of West Carey Street between South Addison and South Meadow Streets and South Granby and South Cherry Streets. Item 13, resolution number 2014-R71, to approve an expenditure of $1,765 from the council district funds for the 2nd District to pay the Department of Information Technology for the printing and mailing of the 2nd District's Spring 2014 newsletter. Those are all of the items on tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you. Those wishing to speak in opposition to any item out of those 13, please step forward, form a line, and come to the podium. Ms. Carron?
Hi, my name is Mo Carnage. I'm speaking against consent agenda item number 7, which states that there is a public necessity to acquire and renovate a property owned by the Richmond Outreach Center on Old Warwick Road to turn it into a public park. My concern comes from, comes with the seemingly irrational and irresponsible behavior of city council and Mayor Dwight Jones regarding our public parks. You guys just made the choice to privatize Monroe Park for 30 years for $1 a year to a non-representative organization, all allegedly to save $3.2 million in the renovation plan costs. This renovation plan is so expensive because it was made by some of the same people who sit on the Monroe Park Conservancy, who is who you've now leased our park to. You sold out the people of the city of Richmond to save $3.2 million. And now, you apparently have the resources to come up with $3.6 million to spend on a new park. Why is there a public necessity for this new project when y'all are apparently incapable of providing sufficient funding for our current park system? You shouldn't be buying new things when you can't afford to pay for the things you already own. That's just basic budget responsibility. You are being incredibly fiscally irresponsible. You're shortchanging the people of the city of Richmond, and you're seemingly pandering to a few wealthy individuals and ignoring everyone else. We see you, and we shall not be moved.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Michael Gilbert. I just want to, I'll be speaking to ordinances 2014-96 and 97. And I just want to make a very brief anecdote that I used to run rescue for four years. I had my EMT. And I was looking online earlier, and I find it very, kind of bothersome that you recognize emergency services in this meeting, and the very, very same meeting earlier today. Apparently, they're going to cut 911 center funding. It just doesn't sit right with me. But regardless, focusing on the ordinances. So the last complete Chaco Stadium proposal released to the public that I was able to review is dated June 19, 2009. And specifically, it discusses incompatibility with the train shed as proposed. So my questions and comments revolve around the train shed and that. And I ask that, you know, to offer clarity, to please immediately release the current complete iteration of the Chaco Stadium proposal to the public. No citizen should have to FOIA a proposal that has such a major effect on and in their city. And then invite Revkey to do a presentation on the Boulevard Stadium proposal. Regardless of the administration's opinion, you deserve, and we, the people, deserve to hear an alternative. This should not be a zero-sum game the administration is trying to strong-arm. Release the complete iteration of the Revkey proposal to the public as well. Compare the two plans and the alternative, which is doing nothing, just as was done with the Monroe Park lease. Present the findings, with or without action. And if there is a plan that council on the whole favors, submit an ordinance and resolution to adopt said proposal. Simply submitting an O and R for consideration does not entail that it will be passed, but it does provide an opportunity to receive public feedback and... it does provide an opportunity to receive public feedback and comment. Now, we hear how important and how critical it is that the Chaco Stadium proposal be adopted and passed, that any other competing plan does not have X, Y, Z, or a slavery history museum, and therefore cannot be adopted. But let's not forget that only 6 months ago did a slavery history museum even become part of the proposal that's gone back since 2009. We must reject all other deals now that lack it because it's so crucial, and it can't even be developed independently? Give me a break. That was a bone the administration threw in an attempt to quell the masses. But now you must also consider the comments that Doug Wilder, former governor and former mayor, whose name is right there, made in regards to creating a slavery history museum. And we are told by none other than Jack Barry of Venture Richmond, and let's not forget for a moment that Dwight Jones is listed as President of the Board of Directors for Venture Richmond, but we have Scary Barry telling us to beware of a Chesterfield politician, of a suburban strip shopping center developer from Edlothian. And then, does it strike as a conflict of interest? Is it disrespectful? Is it offensive? By that thinking, all Virginia should have armed themselves with pitchforks and torches when the Chinese firm bought Smithfield Hams. By that thinking, we should revert to mercantilism. The answer is no, we should not be afraid. Someone who can provide a solution to build a new stadium that costs taxpayers nothing is not something to be afraid of. It's not a conflict of interest, and it's not disrespectful. It's not offensive. If anything, I'm offended that the city is too inept to organize and craft a similar proposal of their own. Obviously, there are many details of both plans that have yet to be revealed, and I could be completely wrong. Both proposals could stink, but the only way to know that is to have the proposals released to the public for inspection and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Mr. Poole?
Hi, President Samuels, member of council. I'm David Poole. I live in the 2nd District, and I'm across the street neighbor of Retreat Hospital. I'm here to speak in opposition to the hospital's plan to amend their special use permit and install an electronic sign in front of the hospital. I think the electronic sign is out of character with the residential neighborhood, and when the hospital 6 or 7 years ago put 3-foot-tall letters in front of the hospital saying "emergency", I think that was sufficient to let people know they have an emergency room there. So I would urge council to oppose this request. Thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Good evening, my name is Todd Martin. I live at 2702 Grove Avenue, near Retreat Hospital, and I want to talk briefly about the ordinance, specifically regarding Retreat Hospital. Specifically about the sign, I don't think the sign should have LED or LCD lighting. I think it's against the character of the neighborhood and the nature of the historic district. I think if this were approved, then every business on Robbins Street would want to have the same kind of lighting to compete with the eye, of trying to capture someone's eye walking, biking, or driving down in that area. So I think the slippery slope, if we approve of this specific part of the ordinance with the lighting of the sign. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Ms. Henning-Davis?
Good evening, Council President Samuels and members of council. I'm Rhonda Henning-Davis, and I'm here to speak in opposition to Paper 2014-98 and 2014-99. I pretty much would like to say ditto to the comments that Mo made earlier. I really do not, while I don't really oppose a park planned in the South Side because I don't think we necessarily have a good, decent public park in the South Side, having seen what just happened with the Monroe Park Conservancy and what City Council approved, I would have to say that I would hope that you would act responsibly if you're given funds to create another park. Because if you can't take care of the park in Monroe Park, or one of our oldest public parks in the city, I don't see the sense in creating a new park that's going to end up in the same boat as the old one, I mean, you know, as Monroe Park. I'm unprepared because I don't understand, and I haven't really had time to research this, but that is my initial statement, and I just wanted to make it clear. Also, I would like to say that I'm speaking as a member of the 2nd District and as the Vice President of the Alliance for Progressive Values. We have hundreds of members in the city, and we would like for City Council to act responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henning-Davis. Ms. Estes?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lily Estes. I had not planned to say anything, but of hearing this item 7, I just really had to add my support to the opposition. I really don't understand, on face value, how you create a park when you take away a park that is of significant importance, you know, even to the point where I heard a few weeks ago that as far as Monroe Park is concerned, you know, the likes of Booker T. Washington spent a night there in his travels moving up and down the East Coast. It's like things of historic significance to the city, if it isn't through a particular lens, it's not being developed for the masses of the people. And not to say that you all are not looking at the totality of efforts for the masses of the people, but at the end of the day, it really seems like your decisions are not working out in the best interest of what your constituent base is asking you to do. And I would ask that you really reconsider your decision-making process, because something really is not bubbling up correct for me, and I really have to question how you all come to your decisions. It is a problem on many, many levels. You know, you don't create a park from someone's private land and then take the public land and, in effect, give it to a private entity. I mean, it's the reverse option for the negative effect for the masses of the people. And you all are elected by the masses of the people. So we need to really make sure that that reality becomes a manifestation. As I said the last night, you know, my internet energy and whatever y'all consider, I'm really very troubled, and we need to work on what this representative democracy really represents in the fullest and most fundamental respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Estes. Yes, sir.
How are you? Good evening. My name is Ilia Aristotle Davis. I want to reiterate, if I could, without saying everything that preceded me, relative to number 7, relative to the purchasing of that property that's actually out Warwick Road area, and it's not a real big cluster of low-income areas that even have use to that area unless you have transportation. I'm not going to complain without being able to offer a solution. There's a building at 1900 Cool Lane that's been vacant for the last 15 years, that's right in the cluster of areas in between Wilkum Court and Fairfield Avenue. And if those type of funds can be, I mean, just bought out of nowhere, and for you guys to consent agenda these items after what you did to Monroe Park, I'm telling you, I'm not even here to complain to you. But I understand this about, if we're going to give money for this consent agenda number 7, going out there to Warwick, that money would be better used at the Cool Lane. It was a former health center, a city-owned building for after-school programs. So women that live in that area, instead of leaving their children in the car, they'll be able to have their children somewhere where they can be able to drop them off in the evening. I'm telling you, we've become a city that spends millions of dollars on every murder when it comes to investigation. I'm still, don't you stop me, Mr. Samuels, I'm still on the same thing, on murders when it comes to the investigation, prosecution, and incarceration, but when it comes to us being proactive, I mean, just do the math on the amount of individuals that are convicted every year of murder, and look at the amount of money that it takes for us to be able to, I mean, we spend tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions, that could be better spent proactively for programs like that. So we won't have individuals going to prison for leaving their children in the car because they're trying to get some work. So I'm talking about for the Cool Lane building, because we're already talking about a cooperative enterprise. Last time when I mentioned cooperative, Mr. Samuels, you said that that was some type of business. I hope you did the research and found out that I'm talking about nonprofit cooperative enterprises that could go in that building at 1900. Give the young people some type of hope and creativity where they can be able to go there and start their own enterprises. We're talking, let us allow us to be able to do a cooperatives with the farmers and be able to bring them fresh fruits and vegetables over there. In that area, they have 6 convenience stores of foreigners that are carpet-bagging our people. And if you read the 34th chapter of Ezekiel, it'll tell you about the mayor that we have.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Cal Mullane from Richmond, Virginia, and I'm a free-market anarchist. And in regards to, I guess, the entire consent agenda with deals with fiscal responsibility and expenditures, I guess I'd like to put in some few points in regards to the Chaco Bottom Stadium that is, would be of much interest, I guess, relevant interest for everyone here involved.
And you're welcome to, but it's not on the agenda tonight.
Well, I guess this would be in addition to the commentary that came up here earlier in regards to, I guess, the new baseball proposal on the Boulevard. So I'm just adding a little bit more information on top of that.
You can speak about, if you can tell me which ordinance you're speaking of.
Which one did he speak of?
He was speaking on, I believe, Papers 5 and 6.
5 and 6, then.
A funding receipt for Public Works Main Street Station.
Right, and the entire consent agenda deals with budget concerns and deals with taxpayers' money, so in that regard, that's what I'm talking about.
You can speak on any paper you'd like, but you've got to stick to a paper.
Because I have to speak to a specific topic? Well, the specific topics in general, what the whole entire paper's talking about is what they're doing with other people's money, and in essence, that's what I like to talk about.
And you're welcome to sign up for the public citizens' comment period to do.
So I have to wait a week before I'm able to speak here?
You can speak on any paper you want, but if you want to speak on just things in general, it is the citizens' comment period.
All right, yes. So again, I'll speak on top of the issue that the gentleman, the second speaker, was talking about, in addition to the information that he was providing about the baseball Chaco.
As long as you just stick to a paper.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sticking to the paper. Sounds good. Can I start now? Can I start over?
You're 50 seconds down already.
No seconds going? Okay, all right, here we go. All right, so this is a paper from the Cato Institute. This is consternantly debunking the economic case for DC baseball. And I'm going to go over very quickly a few points here that I think is relevant interest for everyone to understand the situation of the myths and lies to come with the economic development of baseball stadiums. Number 1.
I'm sorry, you just got to talk about a paper. I'm going to have to cut you off.
......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
seven as well. You know, The Rock Church, didn't they have some, like, head guy go to jail for pedophilia? You know, and it's like, I'm worried about the mayor's connections to religious community, and why shouldn't the city just wait for this property to go into foreclosure? Couldn't we get a better deal on the property that way? One moment, please, let me grab this paper. What the city's proposing to do is spend $1.7 million just to purchase this 17.7 acres of land located in Richmond's Ninth District where there's currently no public park facilities, and what you're buying is one full-size gymnasium. What I am also buying as a citizen of Richmond, a taxpaying citizen, a metal building that houses practice, boxing, fitness facility, three bay door garages, a small school with approximately 26 classrooms, a small cafeteria, a social recreation team facility, small, a church chapel and sanctuary. You know, there is supposed to be a separation, but I guess we won't be holding church services there. I hope that's not the mayor's plan. Anyhow, we're also buying two single-family dwellings, one with a life estate agreement. I don't even know what that means. A regulation soccer, soccer field, two little league baseball fields, and one skate park. These properties are assessed at $2.8 million. Again, we are proposing to buy it for $1.7 million. And you know, it says here fiscal impact, there's no additional cost to the city except for additional future debt service associated with a bond authorization amendment for $1.5 million. How much is it gonna cost to demolish some of these buildings, to get some of these buildings up to be fit for public occupation? To me, this, this seems like it has come out of nowhere. I haven't heard any protracted discussion of this being, so it, to me, it just comes out of nowhere, and we're expected to drop this almost $2 million when we're privatizing Monroe Park because we want to raise $3 million. To me, it doesn't make sense. I mean, I understand that the Ninth District deserves to have public parks, but I don't think rushing into something with this religious organization just to bail them out is the thing to do. I think we're getting a lot of buildings we don't need, and I think we could probably save money and maybe do a more thoughtful design of our facilities than just picking up somebody's used buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr., yes, sir?
Should be on, red light should be on, red light's gone. Greetings. I'm one of the people that's mentioned in this, in this document. This is the law. I'm a man, people can call me whatever they want, but under the law, those are the only things that really matter. I just want to start by talking about all the ordinance regarding the, the trains, train tracks, et cetera. I'm a little surprised to hear that, considering that nobody has mentioned and everybody keeps pretty quiet about the oil spill that dumped tens of thousands of gallons of oil into our drinking water. So I'm glad I got the opportunity to bring that up because that's really reckless endangerment, and that's what we all drink, and that's the environment. We need that, that's the basis for life. And when I say the basis of life, I mean, I mean water. You know, that's, that's the planet, we're mostly water, and that's, again, the law. So I would like to thank council. I think possibly people are thinking that, getting the wrong, the wrong impression, because I just want to thank Lou Brown Ali and Charles Samuels in particular for demonstrating in real time on video camera exactly what I've been saying for the past, I don't know, three, four years, that, meanwhile, I'm opposing everything on the, on the consent agenda for this, for this, for this purpose, that basically you've all demonstrated that you bear false witness, you violate the Constitution, you lie, you act in dishonor, and then after you get caught red-handed in an irrefutable manner, you still continue to do it. So, I mean, that's your choice, because everyone's given free will. And I would like to say that if you'd like to continue to violate the law and act outside of the orders from the people, which is who you serve, you know, sometimes people get it twisted and think that we're there to serve the government, but according to this document, which I've seen most of y'all swear an oath to uphold, you work for the people, and you, you are magistrates of the people, and you listen to the demands of the people. But that's not what we have here. We have crimes being carried out, crimes, I've seen them happen to other people, but they happened to me. Those are severe crimes, and there are lawful arrest orders out. People can see what the crimes are, there's no dispute. Some people can act like tricksters, like Charles there, and lie in the newspaper, misquote when there's video evidence to the contrary. However, the tapes don't lie, and neither do I, and you guys, you guys have to be held accountable to the law. I'm interested in nothing else, I'm not interested in hurting anybody, obviously, I'm interested in, in carrying out my lawful rights, and at this point, we, the people, are interested in taking your ill-gotten property and money and using it for good, under the law. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. And just so you guys know, we have switched to those who are speaking in support of papers.
Yes, most definitely. Hello, my name is Charles Wells, I come as a citizen, also, I wanted to talk to paper number seven and eight, and y'all please excuse me, because normally I know what I'm talking about, but after hearing the comments before me, it really saddens me. I always come and I share with the community that I come to inform and be informed. I don't come to ask council to change anything that they do because the work is done behind, not closed doors, but I found myself as a citizen that the work is done when you engage in what's going on. For those that are not aware, you can't have paper number eight without having paper number seven, that's the one thing. The other is, is don't take no rocket scientist to know unless you've done your homework, and I'm talking to the folks behind me that spoke before, before me, that this project has been on the paper, have been on the table for over 15 years, back when Graham Hedgespack was fighting for a Southside Center that we in the community wanted. So it's not about what the mayor wanted, it's about what we wanted. It's not about a park, we want a Southside Community Center. That's what we want, that's what we ask, and if it takes a park to be part of it, that's what we, the people, wanted. So Councilman Mosby, I thank you for keeping the dreams that the community in Southside. Ms. Trammell, our Eighth District Representative, there are dreams over there in the Hickory Hill Center that I know we're working hard on, and it takes a collective effort of two councilpersons in the Ninth District to work together to make this work. It's not about the mayor, folks, y'all keep saying a park. We're not talking about Monroe Park, but if you want to use that for a springboard, let me tell you a little bit about what's gonna happen in that Southside Community Center, something we've been asking for. We need help with our kids to get them off the streets. Don't you know that Little Marty Cobb was in the street when that happened? If we had that Southside Community Center going, he wouldn't have been in the streets. Yes, he got murdered in his neighborhood, but if we had that Southside Community Center going, he would have had an opportunity to be somewhere where he's been doing a lot of things, being educated, computer labs, job training, life skills, resource centers, sports, not just midnight basketball, because that may be for guys or girls that want to play basketball, but other resources during the time where folks hang out at night to pull them off the street, including classes for seniors. All of those things are incorporated in this. You might not see it, but if you come to Councilman Mosby meeting, or if you come to Councilman Trammell's meeting, then you would find out that these things are going on. And I say in closing, in addition to that, Ms. Mosby and Dr. Merrifield, it would be so wonderful if you would dedicate the physical fitness room in honor of Little Marty Cobb because of his courage and his strength at the age of eight years old to want to save a life because he was taught by his sibling, by his mother and family, that he is the little man of the house, and he is to protect his sisters and his family. So if you would consider that by naming the fitness room, I had it written down here somewhere, but the fitness room dedicated to him, I think it was called the Marty Cobb Fitness Room, because of the courage, the strength, and the ability that he wanted to do to save lives, a little teeny guy with a big heart, and that's all I'm asking that we do. But again, I thank you so much for keeping that, and I'm not getting on the folks behind me, I'm just saying, come on, folks, let's do our homework before we come down here complaining, all right? I love you there, if you got a problem, see me outside.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Yes, sir, Mr. McGruder.
Good evening, my name is Montague McGruder, I am speaking in favor of the speeding ordinances that have been proposed, proposed by Councilman Agostino as a person that actually lives in his district and along the Sims Avenue corridor. As a person that takes public transit and as a person that occasionally rides his scooter around, I have encountered some dangerous situations mainly because of people driving their cars in excess of the speed limit, and on top of that, talking on their cellphones, texting on their cellphones in violation of actual state law, and I've also, you know, it has been some times where I've taken some close calls to the point where I've had to demand respect on the road when I'm on my scooter. So I think this, the speeding ordinances will help, it will definitely help members of my family who often cross the street, because we live near Fire Station 17, and I'm speaking in support of those ordinances. I also have a question about a couple of those ordinances relating to the, the Main Street Station, the multimodal facility. Is that facility going to include connections to bus transit, like local bus transit in the future? If anybody can answer that, I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGruder, yes.
Hi, thank you. My name is Dana Marks, I guess I live in the museums, I've been in Richmond for about, gosh, since 2006. Right now, I want to speak on seven, about the, The Rock and the new park. I work in staffing, I see people every day, mostly women, a lot of them who live in Southside and live in that area, get jobs. I see them get offered the job, I see them interview the job, I prep them for the job, I help them with their resumes. I see them believing themselves in a way that they hadn't before when they're getting depressed on the job market. The one thing that I find that keeps them from keeping those jobs or being able to start on the first day is they don't have access to childcare, they don't have access to a place where their kids can be safe, do their homework, play, get involved in a sport. So when you are considering the issue of the new park in Southside, please keep in mind that a lot of women, many, many people who live in that community can't afford to work. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to speak in support of any paper on the consent agenda? Ms. Frye.
President Samuels, members of the council. My name's Gloria Frye, I'm an attorney here on behalf of Retreat Hospital. Thank you for this opportunity to at least respond to the two speakers that spoke earlier. This ordinance is actually two parts. The first one is to amend a special use permit that was given to the hospital for signage years ago. So this sign that's being proposed in this ordinance is substituting for the old one. The proposed sign is actually smaller than the one that's already permitted. The LED method of lighting is not restricted or prohibited, so that is permitted. The sign is actually more restrictive than what the ordinance allows. Those restrictions came about because of the hospital meeting so well with the Fan District Association, with the Robinson Street Association, getting a letter of no opposition from the Fan District and of support from the Robinson Street. Calls and conversations were held with the individual landowners and residents and neighbors in that neighborhood. The other part of this ordinance is to allow the hospital to commercially lease spaces in its parking deck. Right now, the ordinance would not allow them to do that, while there are businesses who badly need parking spaces and cannot meet the ordinance requirement without those spaces. So that's the other part of the ordinance. We feel like it has a much more restrictive sign than normally permitted. The ordinance also will allow relief for some badly needed parking in the area, and we would be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Frye. Anyone else here to speak in support of any paper on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll bring it, yes, ma'am, do you want to come up and speak?
I'm Virginia Coles, I live at 4001 Monument Avenue, and I want to speak in favor of numbers five and six. I know that GRTC has been working long and hard to improve the transfer situation in downtown, and I'm very much in support of these, these ordinances.
Thank you. Bringing it back to council for discussion on the consent agenda. Ms. Mosby?
I'd like to speak in, in reference to seven and eight. For all those that came, thank you for your opinions. However, the Ninth District was actually the district that pushed the button so that I could be here. And so on this particular thing, I have to listen to that district in reference to trying to get this done for them. This is not something where I feel that the other eight members would be being frugal, and the reason why is because we were setting money aside trying to build a center on Broad Rock, and I saw a sign that said "For Sale" at The Rock, where at one time, my daughter went to The Rock, and it had all of this extra stuff that was already there, so it made more sense to spend less money on a building that's already standing with all of the things entailed than to try to build something and spend more of taxpayer money. So that was one of the reasons why that particular building was chosen. It is actually in the middle of the district instead of on the outskirts. Broad Rock is on the outskirts of the district. Where it sits on Warwick provides it to be in the middle from Broad Rock to Warwick and then Jank to Warwick. I have four apartment complexes off of Carnation, full of children. Blue Ridge, and I can name them all for you, they need somewhere to go. And as the preacher said at Marty's funeral, it's our job to provide somewhere for them to go. So I thank you, all of you that would support this, that we would provide somewhere for our children to go. The Ninth District does not have a place for our young people, they're standing in the street with their basketball goals, they're doing all of the things out in the street where it's not supervised. What we need is a supervised place for our children. It doesn't mean that we're not thinking about the reentry, no, it's always on the forefront of my mind, but it's an and, not an or. So we have to begin to think of things in an and type of way. It's not always cut off because we're doing something this time for this. It means that you should tell yourself, my stuff must be next, because that's how I look at life. Mine might not be today, but it's coming. So we have got to begin to be more open-minded as a city, that if it's not what you particularly think should be happening at this particular moment, ask more questions, get more information, so you can be informed and make good decisions when you come up and you speak. Because the Ninth District and the Eighth District, the Southside itself, we need a place for our young people to go and they be in a safe environment. Thank you, and I hope you all support this. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Ms. Trammell.
Thank you. Michelle, I want to say thank you for, because I know that this has been, I mean, you have been talking about this the day that you were elected, the day that you were sworn in, and yes, we have Hickory Hill Community Center, but it's not big enough, it's not big enough to have all the things that this center that Michelle is pushing for, it's already there. I have been in there many times when Pastor Gee was there, when all, all the events that he used to hold over there. The Eighth District, we used to get people, the seniors, to bring their children there so that they could have activities and things to do there. And what Michelle has proposed, this is gonna be, I mean, it's just not the Ninth District, it's the Eighth District too, it's for the Southside, that's, I mean, there's five council members over here on Southside, not just the Eighth and Ninth, you got the Fourth, you got the Fifth, you got the Sixth. And this would be something that could benefit everyone. Get those children off the street, get them into a place that they can play and have some fun and be supervised. And so I told you earlier, I support you on this 100%.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. Any other comments? Seeing none, bring it back, seeing none, bringing it back for a vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Council is voting on tonight's consent agenda as presented. Mr. Bilalz?
Madam Clerk, yes, on every item except number two.
Ms. Graziano?
Yes, Madam Clerk, yes, on everything except item number two.
Ms. Mosby?
Yes, every item except number two, please.
Mr. Agostino?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye, on every item except number two.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
She's left.
President Samuels?
Aye.
Those papers have been adopted.
Mr. Jackson, do you need to say something?
Paper number two is a special use permit, requires six affirmative votes.
So all papers were adopted?
Except number two.
Except number two, all right. Thank you.
Okay.
Any expedited resolutions?
There are no expedited resolutions for consideration.
May we please move to approval of the minutes?
The minutes to be approved are from the Monday, April 28, 2014, informal and formal city council meeting. Ms. Newbill, will you make the motion to approve those minutes?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
You're now voting on Counselor Newbill's motion to approve the minutes as presented. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Ms. Agostino?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
And President Samuels?
Aye.
Those minutes have been adopted.
Thank you. I think now we should move to reports and announcements. Ms. Trammell, I believe we have a fire alarm that could be installed by the fire department, is that correct?
Well, he left something out.
Well, tell us what it is.
Okay. If you go to the nearest fire station and set up an appointment, those firefighters will come to your home, come to your business, come to your church, and they will check out those, your smoke alarms, and if you do not have one, they will install the smoke alarm for free, and also, if you need a battery, they will install a battery. And if, and if you want to call 646-1526, that's 646-1526, you can call that number and schedule appointments with the firefighters to come to your home. Remember, these fire, these smoke alarms do save your lives. If you have a working smoke alarm, as President Barack Obama, President of the United States of America, has said, everyone should have a smoking, a working smoke alarm. And after the meeting, some people are gonna be asking me, what did we say, because y'all not paying attention. Mr. President, I'm gonna stop, because I want to read this one, too.
All right. You want to give it a chance to quiet down before you read anything else? Folks, since we're still having a meeting, if you could keep your comments to a whisper in here, if you want to talk out loud, please feel free to step outside the room. Sorry, Ms. Trammell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, tomorrow at 5:00, we're having our public safety meeting, it will be held here in the council chambers, that is, tomorrow at 5:00 PM. Also, this Thursday, this Thursday, May the 15th, from 6:00 to 8:00, is our Eighth District meeting, and it will be held at the satellite 4,000 block of Jefferson Davis. We're gonna have Dr. Merrifield with Recreation Parks, he's gonna be there to talk to us about the Hickory Hill Community Center, also about the cemeteries, about, we've asked and requested for signage at some of the cemeteries. Also, Ms. Gay Stokes is gonna be there, she is gonna be speaking about stormwater, why do we have to pay that stormwater that everybody keeps calling me in reference to, why, why do we have to pay it and what is it for? Also, we will have the police officers there, firefighters will be there from Company 21, and our captain, Marty Harrison, from Second Precinct, also Captain Roger Russell from First. Also, Captain Marja Russell from First and Emmett Smith from Third. So please come and talk to your captains and get to meet them. And if you have any questions, you can call my home. Again, you can call my home at 233-7382 or my personal cell, 804-240-5050. Again, 804-240-5050 is my personal cell. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. Dr. Newbill, would you like to go?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to extend an invitation to all Seventh District residents to come out to our next Seventh District East End Community Meeting, which will be held on Monday, May 19th, at 6:00 p.m. at the East District Family Resource Center located at 2405 Jefferson Avenue. During that time, we'll have an opportunity to receive several updates, including the alley repair campaign by the Department of Public Works, the traffic calming circles and crosswalks that are in progress. Obtain information on new procurement and vendor services processes, as well as the Build a Better Block Initiative that will occur in the Seventh District, along with the East End Economic Summit that will occur in the district in June. So again, an invitation to all Seventh District residents to come out to our next community meeting, May 19th, 6:00 p.m. at the East District Family Resource Center located at 2405 Jefferson Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Newbill. Mr. Hilbert?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. The next Third District monthly meeting will be on Wednesday, May the 28th, at Pine Camp, which is at 4901 Old Brook Road next to Henderson Middle School, just one block east of Chamberlain Avenue. Our guests will include the Sector Lieutenants for Sectors 411 and 412. Anthony McLean, the Deputy Director of Emergency Service, will discuss in particular tornado preparedness. And we will have a special guest, the Honorable Dr. Cynthia Newbill, the Seventh District Council member. We're inviting all council members to come to Third District meeting. So I thank Dr. Newbill for her willingness to come, and invitations will be extended to all council members eventually, and I appreciate those that have come out so far. We also do have, and that's at 6:00. I'm sorry, Mr. President, here. I don't think I made that very clear. 6:00, 28th of May, Pine Camp. On the 14th... Excuse me, the 21st of May is the Health, Human Services and Education Committee meeting. Excuse me, the Education and Human Services Committee meeting that will happen Wednesday, May the 21st, at 5:00 p.m. here at City Hall in the council chambers. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. Ms. Trammell, did you want to add one thing?
Just one little thing. I know that we've had some bumps in the road as far as with crime and with the death of little Marty. In my district, he was trying to protect his sister. And I just want to say that I want to thank all the police officers and our chief and the firefighters and also the MS for coming out and being in the Eighth District and doing all that they can do to help the families and also so many pastors that were involved, school board members. Derek Jones, our school board member from the Eighth District, he was there. And I just want to say that we got to work together. We all have to work together, community policing. This is what the chief is reaching out, asking us to do, to get involved, to help our police officers. When you see a crime, don't sit back and say that you don't want to, you know, participate. Get involved. Help our police officers who are doing an excellent job for our city of Richmond. So please, please, you know, stay involved and help us. Thank you.
Mr. Agelasto?
Thank you, Council President. And I think, Ms. Trammell, your words are well-received by many people in our city. And whether it's crime or other initiatives, we can work together, and many hands make small work, which is going to segue to my first announcement. This Saturday, May the 17th, from 9:00 a.m. until noon, we're hosting our Fifth District cleanup over in the Swansboro Hull Street neighborhood. We're actually going to be meeting at George With High School in their parking lot on the Crutchfield side and are going to be working with residents of the neighborhood, churches, et cetera, to do a cleanup. Both... We're going to focus mostly on the Crutchfield Street, but we're going to also be on Midlothian Turnpike trying to clean up the area. And if you're interested, our cleanups are available to anybody in the city who wants to get out and make a difference, and you can register on hands on rva.org. And then May is Bike Month, National Bike Month, and there are a lot of things going on in the city. We were talking about increasing funding for bike infrastructure. And on May the 14th, there will be a public forum at the Carillon to discuss the new Bike Master Plan, and that will be... Begin at 6:00 p.m. this week, May the 14th. And then the following week, May the 19th, we will be discussing the Floyd Avenue Bike Boulevard proposal, and that will begin at 6:30 at the Virginia Historical Society. So you've got two opportunities to engage in the city's bike infrastructure and Bike Master Plan. And then finally, this Friday is National Bike to Work Day. So I encourage my colleagues or anybody else to consider hopping on your bicycle and going to work. It's certainly an alternative transportation and one that I think many of us will find quite accessible in the city in years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. Do I have a volunteer from the left-hand side? All right. Ms. Mosby, you got it up seconds faster than Ms. Graziano.
Thank you, Council President. I have a couple of announcements. On Tuesday, May 13th, at 6:00 p.m., at the Midlothian Team Civic Meeting, the Chair Alma Moore will be held at South Side Plaza. And the guest for that will be Ms. Trina Louise, and she has over three decades of experience as a trainer, developer, and manager of criminal and juvenile justice programs and services. She is a graduate of Thomas Jefferson High School, and also she is currently the Attendant Services Center Manager for the City of Richmond Department of Justice Services. So please come out to that meeting on tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m. at the South Side Plaza. Also, my district meeting will be Thursday, May 15th, this Thursday, at First Union Baptist Church at 6144 Derwent Road, and that's at 6:00 p.m. also. So I'm asking all of the Ninth District citizens to please come out to that meeting. It's informative. That's where you get all of the good information that we need so that we can work together cohesively. So please come out. Please come out. Please come out to our district meeting. I just want to take some time, and I want to hold this up. And this picture reference is for the 200... Is for the 230 girls that were kidnapped six days ago in Nigeria. And now suspected Boko Haram Islamists militants have abducted eight more girls in northeastern Nigeria. Our children are important, and we all need to do the best we can to protect them. As Dr. Martin Luther King would say, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." I'm asking you all to please bring back our girls. As always, I can be reached at Michelle.Mosby@RichmondGov.com, and my number is 804-646-2779, Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mosby. Ms. Graziano?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to tell everybody that on Tuesday, May 20th, at 7:00, Forest Hill Presbyterian Civic Association will have Ed Ayers as the main speaker. That will be at the Forest Hill Presbyterian Church, and I meant to say Forest Hill Civic Association. Everyone is welcome to attend. I think that should be very interesting. While we're on Forest Hill, I'd like to announce that Forest Hill Summer Market is open. I want to thank the neighborhood for really for putting up with inconvenience for all the traffic that goes through their neighborhood during the market, which is from 8:00 to noon. And I would ask that people that come to the market be respectful and park their cars in the lot as opposed to in the neighborhood. And also, finance is at 3:00 on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bilalz?
Thank you, Mr. President. As Councilman Agelasto pointed out, there will be a Bike Boulevard... Floyd Avenue Bike Boulevard meeting on Monday, May 19th, at 6:30 p.m. at the Historical Society. And also would like to remind people that the district meeting this month will be held on Wednesday, May 28th, since council will be holding their meeting Tuesday, May 27th, because of the Memorial Day holiday delays a week... A day that week. So May 19th and May 28th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bilalz. Did anyone forget anything they'd like to add? Okay. Tomorrow afternoon at 5... That's not right. Tomorrow afternoon at 6:00 p.m. at the Orchard House School, 500 North Harrison Street, the intersection Allen and Monument, there'll be a meeting between the Monument Avenue Preservation Society, Department of Public Works, and myself to discuss proposed safety enhancements and improvements to the Lee Monument intersection. That's literally at that intersection, Lee and Monument... Excuse me, Monument and Allen. And this is only the first of several meetings. We'll have one that includes the Fan District Association and the West Gray Street Association as well, since they will be infected as well. Also, tomorrow night, the Fan District Association's annual meeting will be held at 7:00 p.m. I'll be at both. That's at the Virginia Historical Society, 428 North Boulevard, and to the treasurer of the Fan District Association, I will be bringing my check for membership to renew. The city is going to have their Spring Recycling Day this coming Saturday, May 17th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 1710 North Boulevard. That's North Boulevard and Robin Hood Road. They include... They will be accepting computers, monitors, radios, vacuum cleaners, microwaves. There is a $7 recycling fee for televisions. They also are going to have a shredding machine on site. You can bring up to five boxes of unwanted paper. A note, they will not be accepting large appliances or fluorescent lights. So please don't bring large appliances or fluorescent lights. Mr. Bilalz and I... Excuse me. Mr. Bilalz, Mr. Agelasto, and I will be having a meeting at the Virginia Historical Society at 6:30 p.m. on May 19th to discuss the Floyd Avenue Bike Boulevard and give citizens an opportunity to learn more about those traffic calming changes that may be coming. On the 20th is the Historic Jackson Ward Association at Club 533, the corner of Third and East Jackson. May 21st, from 5:30 to 7:00, I'll host my quarterly town hall meeting at the Redskins Training Center, 2401 West Lee Street. We have the police, we have public utilities, and we have our delegate Jennifer McClellan coming to give a discussion on what's happening at the General Assembly. And then Council Hilbert and myself, on May 29th, will be hosting a meeting at Lynnwood-Holton to discuss proposed bike lanes that traverse the Second and Third Districts on Hermitage between Westbrook and Westwood, Brooklyn Parkway between Hermitage and Brook, and Lee Street between the railroad tracks near Meyer Street and Deneen Street. Those were my announcements. Did anyone else forget anything? That being the case, Madam Clerk, would you please read the new papers in?
Mr. President, the introduction papers for this evening are as follows. Item number... I'm sorry. Ordinance number 2014-107, and that's to amend city code by adding a new Division 9.1 for the purpose of establishing a Board of Equalization of Real Estate Assessment pursuant to Virginia Code Section 58.1-3373.1. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, May 15th at 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing Date, Tuesday, May 27th. Ordinance number 2014-108, and that's to authorize the CAO to enter into an agreement between the city and the Economic Development Authority for the purpose of providing for the development of a proposed project in the Shaco Bottom area. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, May 15th at 3:00 p.m. Land Use, Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, May 20th at 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing Date, Tuesday, May 27th. Ordinance number 2014-109, to declare that a public necessity exists and to authorize the acquisition of permanent drainage easement and temporary construction easement for the constructing of multimobile transportation and drainage improvements along Jank Road between Blankmore Road and Forest Hill Avenue. Planning Commission, May 19th at 1:30 p.m. Council Public Hearing Date, Tuesday, May 27th. Ordinance number... Ordinance number 2014-110, to declare a public necessity exists and to authorize the acquisition of permanent temporary easements on 500 East Brooklyn Park Boulevard for the construction of Phase 3 of the Canyon Creek Bicycle and Pedestrian Trail. Land Use, Housing, Transportation Standing Committee, May 20th at 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing Date, Tuesday, May 27th. Ordinance number 2014-111, to abolish the Monroe Park Advisory Council to repeal Resolution... Resolutions numbers 297-R3748 and 98-R3645, to terminate the terms of and to remove reference to council and to repeal city code Section 2-110-29 concerning terms of members of the Advisory Board of Recreation and Parks. Land Use, Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, May 20th at 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing Date, Tuesday, May 27th. Ordinance number 2014-112, to amend city code Section 98-221 concerning pollution control, equipment, facilities, and property exemptions for taxation for reflecting amendments to Virginia Code Section 58.1-3660. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, May 15th at 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing Date, Tuesday, May 27th. Ordinance number 2014-113, to amend city code Section 98-250 concerning property exemptions for taxation by classification for reflecting amendments to Virginia Code. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, May 15th at 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing Date, Tuesday, May 27th. Ordinance number 2014-114, to amend city code Section 98-364 concerning exemptions for the limits on the application of meals tax for reflecting amendments to the Virginia Code. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, May 15th at 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing Date, Tuesday, May 27th. Ordinance number 2014-116, to amend Chapter 50, Article 3 of the city code concerning the city's erosion and sediment control program. Chapter 50, Article 4 concerning the city's Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act program. Chapter 50, by adding a new Article 4 concerning the stormwater management program and to amend Appendix A of the city code by adding new fees, all for the purpose of ensuring compliance with state code. Land Use, Housing, Transportation Standing Committee, May 20th at 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing Date, Tuesday, May 27th. Ordinance number 2014-115, to amend city code Section 98-130 and 98-131 concerning tax relief for elderly and permanently and totally disabled persons for reflecting amendments to Virginia Code. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, May 15th at 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing Date, Tuesday, May 27th. Resolution number 2014-R74, to commemorate the 150th anniversary of the birth of Maggie L. Walker and to designate July 15th of each year as Maggie L. Walker Day. Education and Human Services, May 21st at 5:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing Date, Tuesday, May 27th. Resolution number 2014-R75, to approve $2,377.76 cents from the Council District Fund to pay for the printing of newsletters for dissemination to Ninth District residents. Council Public Hearing Date, Tuesday, May 27th. Resolution number 2014-R76, to approve $458.85 from the Council District Fund to pay for the printing of postcards for dissemination to Ninth District residents. Council Public Hearing Date, May 27th. Resolution number 2014-R77, to approve the mayor's appointment of Carlos M. Bryan as a member of the Board of Directors of the Richmond Metropolitan Transportation Authority. Council Public Hearing Date, Tuesday, May 27th. Resolution number 2014-R78, to approve the mayor's appointment of Pierce R. Homer as a member of the Board of Directors of the Richmond Metropolitan Transportation Authority. Council Public Hearing Date, Tuesday, May 27th. Resolution number 2014-R79, to approve the mayor's appointment of Darius A. Johnson as a member of the Board of Directors of the Richmond Metropolitan Transportation Authority. Council Public Hearing Date, Tuesday, May 27th. Resolution number 2014-R80, to approve the mayor's appointment of Betty Jolly as a member of the Board of Directors of the Richmond Metropolitan Transportation Authority. Council Public Hearing Date, Tuesday, May 27th. Resolution number 2014-R81, to approve the mayor's appointment of Marilyn H. West as a member of the Board of Directors of the Richmond Metropolitan Transportation Authority. Council Public Hearing Date, Tuesday, May 27th. Mr. President, that concludes the reading of this evening's introduction papers.
Thank you very much. Unless there's any other business, this meeting is adjourned.
Well, just a little under two hours tonight with tonight's Richmond City Council meeting. I got a call to order at 6:03. There were no appointments or reappointments tonight. Got the awards and presentations and the citizens...
and the citizens' comment period. But we got the regular agenda. The only paper on the regular agenda was basically voted on the CDBG block grant funds paper, and that is one that is an application to HUD for money for local projects here in Richmond. So that is no money coming out of the city coffers. That was approved, 801, the one abstention coming from Council Member Hilbert citing possible conflict of interest. Then we got to something interesting tonight, the consent agenda. There were 11 items on there. We had people speaking against and people speaking for. Now, when I got to the acquisition of the Richmond Outreach Center for a public park, five people spoke against it. Funding for Main Street Station Phase 3, we had two people speaking against that. And then we had special use permit for electric sign, et cetera, at Retreat Hospital. Two people spoke against that. Then we got to the people in favor. There were two that were in favor of the acquisition of the Richmond Outreach Center. This would take that area off Old Warwick Road and turn it into a public park and a community center, basically. And then we got to special, one person speaking in favor of the excessive speeding increased fines paper, one coming down, an attorney, talking about the Retreat Hospital paper, and then one to talk about Main Street Station in favor. Now, here's what got a little unusual, something we don't usually see. The papers were adopted except for one paper. Four people voted against paper number two, which was the Retreat Hospital paper. You had to have six people voting in favor of that paper for it to pass. So here's a case where a paper on the consent agenda was defeated. However, the rest of the papers were all approved. So something you don't see happening every day, but it can happen, and tonight it did. Okay, then we got the approval of minutes, reports from council members, introduction of new papers, and at just about 8:00 in the evening, we are done until now. Our next meeting, next regularly scheduled meeting, will be two weeks and one day from today. It'll be on Tuesday, May 27th, mainly because Monday, May 26th, is Memorial Day, and the city offices will all be closed. So we'll see you again the day after Memorial Day. Please drive carefully over the holiday weekend, enjoy yourselves, and we'll see you again 15 days from today, on May 27th. For Gavel to Gavel, I'm Dick Harmon, saying goodnight.